That's what we request.
Okay, thank you very much. Board, we did put this on the agenda, we were sorry.
I'm moving to amend the agenda today. I'm saying the agenda.
Motion second, we amend the agenda. In favor of that?
Aye.
I also move that we approve this resolution.
I see. That motion is second, we approve this resolution. October. The, I have my vote in mind. We appreciate what you do in the county. Our, our team.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. As ever.
I will pay for that.
Aye.
Vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Having back the minutes from Regulium, our previous fifth. additions and corrections to the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I have mentioned that we approved the amendment through Regulum's meeting until October 5th, 2011.
Sir.
Motion to approve the minutes. End of discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Vote. Moving on down to public works. There was one, I don't know if public works, I think, is the maintenance map, Captain Nipwe. Because these are, are they, would you like them?
I can hear.
This is the revised map. Captain Nip, that we've talked about last time, about moving the maintained right-of-way line back to where the existing fence is. Everything's been revised on the drawing and what we're asking for right now is just approval for the maintenance map. The milers are being done right now, as soon as the milers are ready, we'll have them all written for signature, but this is a topic of what's, what's going to be approved.
Can I, can I, Ray come forward and tell him, Ward, that that's been maintained right of way?
Ray, can you clarify the mapping?
Just the, the part of the map that's depicted there is being maintained, that we've maintained at least that much in excess of four years prior to the execution of this map.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you know that from your personal knowledge?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, if the board wishes to. So, if the board wants to approve the maintenance map as, as submitted, and then when milers come, the clerk and chairman will sign that. And as we discussed before, that creates a above presumption of those properties vested in the county. And that's only how we handle the myriad of hereabouts and those kind of things we have that we don't have deed.
I have a next question, I mean, motion that we accept this map as, as your second.
Yeah, motion second, we accept this maintenance map for Captain Nipwe. End of discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Vote. Fine, but. Unfinished business, Osilla landfill, it's like the rocket.
All unfinished business?
All unfinished, yeah. That's, that's where it's.
That way you can keep your boys until it's finished.
That's where we're at. We'll never get finished with you, brother.
Oh, I thought to spend a few minutes with you going over some of the benefits of Osilla landfill before I talked about the land purchase. So, I have, I'm going to change this one. How do I have a?
It can be changed, you just have to scroll down.
Okay.
Might need the help from just.
No. I'll be all right. Okay. Here we go. The first page basically shows if you did not have the Osilla landfill here, the closest landfill outside of the county with the, the old old landfill in Augusta. And that costs about $32 to take the disposal only. You didn't have to package the garbage, halve the transportation cost. And in here, in Greenville, you do not have any of those costs. And so, basically, you have a net difference between, your net tenant fee would be $39.62 at Osilla and $66.31. And the private land, the reason I bring this up, I was asked by Dixie County Commission and then later Taylor to present this to them because they heard that somehow some other land was cheaper. And then I said, well, I'm coming here, might as well do it for you too. Not, not that you had any doubts. And then in addition to that, you are having some other benefits gone. Had I get pounded.
I don't think it was human.
Okay, okay, okay. Here's a summary of benefits for 2001. We give you a direct refund of $152,850, cash refund. And savings of $291, total of about half million dollars savings for having the landfill in Greenville. And, but here, our survey already has something to do with that landfill being there, so I'm, I want to give him a little credit, not much. I'm okay with the sign that he had given. The other thing is that I also want to know, let you know that you really have an asset in there. And one of the questions, somebody in Taylor County says somehow we owe money, we borrowed money, we doubled. In fact, we, the way this facility was set up, it works on a cash basis. That means that we escrow money for everything. Want a piece of, buy a new compactor, you don't have to go borrow money, you have cash reserves to pay for. You want to build a new 10-acre cell, which we just did, we have cash when you go build it. So, the escrow account is going and we really have in excess of $15 million in bank. That means it's not available to distribute it to you, but it's available for this need. At the end of the use of life, useful life of it, there will be $15, $20 million left in the asset to be distributed or go to a new technology. So, I want to let you know that the facility was set up properly at the beginning. And in addition to cost savings now, you do have a asset, not a liability. I was asked some questions that are very appropriate, and that is, what is the control of the garbage? How it is worked? This facility is based on tonnage. The more tonnage, the lower the cost. So, if some of the waste in your county, Dixie County, Taylor County goes somewhere else, you won't get that at the landfill, therefore your cost goes up. So, you must have total control over your waste within the county. And I hope, I thought we had that flow control mechanism in place. If you don't have it, I suggest very strongly that you have it because whether or not you take any waste there or not, you are liable for the costs. If all the waste goes somewhere else, that doesn't go there, your tipping fee is going to go up. So, that's very important that you have, I know you have internal equipment with the city, but the commercial and other waste, if you don't have it, I highly recommend that you have flow control. Now, the subject that was here, the property that you originally purchased as part of the landfill, Madison County purchased all the properties that was purchased from Farmer's Home and USDA. And you financed it, you bought it, and Osilla landfill bought a portion of those property from you. The balance is owned by Madison County. You utilized some of it, the city of Greenville, or their waste treatment plant from the Green Hill Academy, that's called.
Green Hill.
Green Hill. There are some additional lands available on the property, and Osilla has expressed interest in purchasing that. Did not have a survey until very recent, in fact, last week, sometimes I was giving the survey. We were purchasing the, all the contiguous properties. Somehow I missed it and the board missed it, that the 40-acre is in fact landlocked. The 40-acre that we also, Osilla board also agreed to purchase from is landlocked by those two rectangular parcels. I have information that those two rectangular parcels have been part of some disposals in the past. Drums and other things may have been disposed of there. That was our concern, we did study and we found out that at this time, there was no impact on the property we intend to purchase. Therefore, I told the board, they can't purchase that 40 acres, is landlocked. In addition to that, I thought that the two pieces of property that I think is owned by the status have an access or an easement to it, but it doesn't. Somehow there is a little easement or little pro, this little pathway, but it doesn't go through, and there is no easement. Okay? Now, I have been contacted by Ms. Davis who is interested to sell these two pieces. We're not interested in purchasing yet, but I'm not saying Osilla may not, Osilla may be interested in purchasing an easement or access to her property, the 40 acres. We have a board meeting Monday. This will be brought up. If they want to buy the entire, including the 40 acres, even though it's not contiguous, I have no objection, that's their call. If in case they don't want to buy the 40 acres now, I recommend we go ahead and close on the piece that we originally planned on, which is the contiguous piece. Purchase that now, immediately. Proceed with it. And then work on finding an access and then deal with the 40 acres later. I, I can't tell you what the board will do, because they're the board, they're going to say this and to me, but I will make my recommendations. So, on the Monday, we will have a floor meeting for our attorney, to your attorney. And in fact, I, I emailed both your attorney and our attorney to proceed with the document. Until I looked at the surveys, I hope, I need to tell our board that there is, it's not contiguous. So, that will be brought up Monday. Depending on their decision, then they buy the whole, the all of them, including the 40 acres, or they, they may buy the contiguous piece, which I would think we will. And then allow the 40 acres to be, until later, we'll refund access. We may be able to swap an access with her, give her an easement to her property, that easement that way. The only concern is I want to make sure the easement or access we get is clean, that it's nothing in it. So, that's my report, if you have a question about that.
Frank, just got one, you know, we've been working on this, this land purchase for pretty good while, I think.
Yes, sir.
And total thing, 137 acres, the whole thing?
Uh.
That, that wasn't?
Yes, I think so.
137 acres? This 40 wasn't cleared, is that?
Yes.
Okay, if it wasn't, environmental studies done on this, to make sure it was clean land and all that?
Oh, yes. I'm saying has, it's an access, it's a landlocked piece of property.
Okay, and, and I assume that Davis's property is landlocked also?
Yes, but Davis's property does have a problem. I know has a problem.
An environmental problem?
Yes. It has not seeped into the other property. That doesn't mean there are no drums, there are things not buried, that we know things are buried.
But this 40 acres is clean?
The 40 acres, to my knowledge, does not have anything buried on it, yes. And the groundwater doesn't move that way, so I, I'm assuming, yes, there is no environmental problem with 40 acres. But why would Osilla, and I'm, I'm not answering, they're going to ask, why would you buy a piece of property we don't have access to? The reason we wanted to buy this piece for Osilla, is to use it as fill, to prepare fill and, but, we're going to dig out and use it for our daily cover, we need fill material. We're going to dig in for 40 acres the same way, even though there's a lot of wetlands in it, there are some areas we could use it. But if you can't get there and use it, I'm not saying no, I'm saying they're probably going to say, why don't we buy it until we get access?
So, what do you ask of us, our?
No, no, I'm just reading your report, I'm not asking you anything. I was asked to come give an update, I'm not asking you anything. I'm saying to you that Monday, Tuesday morning, I am confident that an attorney from Osilla will contact your attorney and say, let's close on this acreage that's contiguous. And then let's continue discussing on the 40 acres. Or if the board said, let's buy it all, and he said, buy it all, I can't make that decision. I was asked to give a report, I'm not asking you anything.
So, where does that play on this?
The status.
So, Mr. Chairman, if, if they did decide that, we did close until enough weeks, because I have very bad, you know, that.
Or you can get authorization right now to close on whatever they want.
That's right.
You can get authorization right now, you don't have to wait a month. I'm saying as a minimum, whatever they wanted by, you get authorization, proceed. We have the survey, it can be the entire 137 or it could be 137 and less, quarter. You choose to do that, I'm not saying do it, you want the money quickly.
Board can do that anyway.
You could do it either, you can wait a month, or right now authorize them for whatever Osilla wants to purchase, go and close it.
That would be my motion.
Say to talk to the board about.
To go ahead and get market permission for them to move on once this has been approved by Osilla landfill.
Whatever, whatever acres they want.
Now, so again, Mr. Chairman, okay, right now you're showing a total acreage by the survey count of 126.4 acres. And so, the way the contract was set up, so we had a certain amount per acre that we're going to multiply by the survey number of acres, and that would be your, your closing price. Now, we had a appraisal done and all of that to give you a total price, you go for a total price of the property. Then when you set up the survey provisions of the contract, you say, we're going to assign a certain acreage price to it, if the survey varies, you can change the price that way. Those are, are set up that way for surveying variances, not when you're cutting out a big, big piece. You've got a 40-acre piece back there that probably would have had a lower per acre value, and then you've got frontage up here that probably would have had a higher per acre value. By, by moving the 40, I, I don't know that you want to apply that exact same dollar figure to the 40 acres that are being moved. That's a, that's a decision the board made, they might want to consider that. If you want to reduce your, if you want to agree to reduce the purchase price by that 40.13 acres, do you understand what I'm saying?
Let me explain that, because I think they understand, I understand it wasn't the other way around. I, I, the original appraisal was not done with the 40 in it. And then 40 shouldn't be lower, but we didn't lower, we went with the same, so I think it's exactly reversed what you said.
Could be original, the bottom included before?
No, sir.
That's not correct.
That's, no, the original appraisal included everything except the 40. Then we said, throw in the 40. Well, well, whatever it is.
But the appraisal price that was done was higher than what you had proposed, the whole 137.
But again, I, I.
My ability of, of.
Yeah, that's, it was higher.
I know you have a lot of your products.
So, Derek, y'all need to, correct me what you want me to do, if you want me to reduce it by that amount in the contract, I certainly do that way, if you want to put it some other way.
Okay, right now we have a motion second. How many motion again?
Okay, my motion, if you can to approve, we already had the amount that was set for the purchase of the property. To move forward once the attorney come back before the board with Mr. Reed, and that would be my motion that we move on it and not wait another month for it.
Okay.
So, maybe it might be best to wait until after the landfill meeting, at the next meeting, don't you think?
That's my statement, sir.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, when we, when we talking about looking at the same amount, they, per acre, for all of them?
Less than four.
Exactly. The 40 will kind of change.
It's going to be the same.
That's, that's what.
Well, that's what I'm saying, they offer less money per acre.
They're not going to pay for it. They're not going to pay for it.
And so, now they're, now they're saying with the, what is it, 86.4 acres that they may buy, or decide on Monday, it's going to be a lesser price than your, the price you want for that same 84 acres.
On the board of the Osilla landfill, and I'm pretty much sure that it's going to remain, it should not change for the same amount that they purchased it for from the beginning, that we agreed upon. Because then we run into other problems, where they're going to come back here for us and we're going to play, do we want to accept that price? So, Frank, pretty much?
My opinion is they're not going to go for any higher than per acre as it is. That's, that's been very clear to them, and it's not the land that they need, and some of the issues involved, I don't want to bring it up. But I think you'd be, if you want to sell it, that's the value per acre, I've known well enough that I can tell you not going to be higher.
And it shouldn't be lower, it should be the same price that they did it from the beginning.
Right, what I'm saying is when they add the 40 acres in there, they lower the price for what the appraisal was to us, and the, the price will not be around here after two years.
Okay. The whole thing is going to fall apart. I don't think, I think the whole thing will fall apart.
I, I still think go wait till.
That's fine.
Also, they're saying, they bring it back to us.
That's fine.
Well, I'll withdraw my motion, and we will wait, we can wait 40 months, and so we can get clarity on exactly the price they were looking for the additional 40 acres.
And, and to the problems.
And to the problems.
That's fine.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, one, one other possible alternative would be to, to just wait a little bit longer and see if the, Osilla can work out the purchase of an easement with this Ms. Davis. Then you have the whole thing left, and we can, you know. You know, we, we had discussed with Ms. Davis previously about getting easements and all that exchange business, and she seemed willing at the time. Then we started discussing the sale of property and landfill, and so that kind of get around the easement.
I, I know the board and the labor department, I advise not to complicate the wholesale of the farm. Also, let me consideration, and I only talked about it today, about purchasing this land, because all have gone away. And there is no need for this land, all of this wetland, and I'm taking my hat off as an Osilla. If you put it off, they'll never buy it.
Free your motion.
Yes, I would prefer to come to you.
Sir.
And we'll wait until the actual meeting for the Osilla landfill, because I'll be in attendance to that meeting.
Okay. Thanks for your report.
Thank you, sir.
We have a full 2pm public hearing, a special exception application from Solar District from there. So, let's have that.
Did anybody want to sign in to speak about the public hearing? This is an advertised public hearing, an application from Solar distributors about doing a special exemption use in a residential, the land use is residential. They're not asking for land use change, they're asking for a special exception to do a public utility slash service type of a business in a residential area. And, nobody else here to sign? We had a public hearing at the Planning and Zoning Board meeting last Thursday, and it was unanimously voted to recommend, oh, let me give you, they brought in a, a packet on what project it's about.
Let me see my best.
Okay. And there's one for everybody, 10 minutes history. And so, the Planning and Zoning Board voted to recommend approval, subject to some conditions. There, there were two basic concerns that were brought up at the Planning and Zoning Public Hearing. One of them being that Captain Brown, the canopy road on Captain Brown not being compromised. And the other issue that was brought up by the school board is the concern that students or children at the, that would be doing, attending or as some sort of function at the central school would come over onto this property and maybe do vandalism or something, or maybe get hurt, and then school, and then sue the school board. So, their recommendation was that the, the solar panel project had some sort of fencing that would deter people from getting over into that property. And as staff, we were looking at kind of, you know, recommending that, you know, fencing maybe with some barbed wire facing out with, you know, signs being posted, no trespassing, violators would be prosecuted. To make it very clear that this is not something that anybody's supposed to be getting into, and if they do get into it, they're at fault, and it wasn't any kind of luring by the, you know, an attractive, something that they wanted to look at, you know, the new bright attractive nuisance, and so make it very clear that anybody trespassing on that property is a violator and, and would be punished. So, that's, that's the recommendation for the staff and the Planning and Zoning Board. And I believe Mr.
One side in to speak for, for, to the public, and I, I want you to sign in. I speak on it.
I'm just representing the mayor, but anybody can speak.
And Mr. J.K. Burnett, he, as far as questions explaining the project and what's going to be there and how it's going to work, he's here to speak if y'all would like to have him explain exactly what he's going to propose.
Ms. Bass, from the Planning and Zoning Board, do you have petitions or did you have public input that was there for that meeting?
Yes, yes, we had, we had, so they're surrounding some of the neighbors and school board representatives there to discuss it. So, it was discussed.
They were sending letters out?
Yes, yes, everybody was sending letters, and it's been advertised and the sign has been posted.
If we could, I, I would like to, just have a little update on, on.
Yeah, sure.
See what you.
Well, you want kind of just a, a basic rundown of kind of what the project is and kind of a fill-in? This is technology out of the physics department of Florida State, and this is, as much as anything, is a research and development project. This technology was created by Florida State about three years ago. And what this is, is that you've probably seen on television shows where there are these, these big mirrors out in the desert, and they kind of all come up on, on a tower or something of that nature. Well, those mirrors cost about $40 a square foot. Florida State is coming up with a solution to replace those mirrors with a more optical efficient mirror at 50 cents a square foot. To basically, for Department of Energy, you kind of have to have a two-year test, and this is basically building that test site here at Madison. So, kind of why I'm Madison, really, I'm from Madison, I own a piece of property, 50 acres, which was the old Mr. Brown's property. Mr. McClure had this piece of property, and the interconnect, so what's kind of important is, is that the power is produced close to a location that it's consumed. So, it is not a better location right there by the school, because the production of this facility closely lines up with the consumption need for the school. So, basically, it's fed back into the grid, the power works kind of like water, you know, goes the path of least resistance. If someone's basically got their spigot turned on closed and the water comes up, that's where it's going. So, Mr. McClure and I were able to work out trade for that 50 acres for this 23 acres to basically build a site next to the school. And we're kind of, we're really excited about building it here. It, there's no noise, if you, if you look at this picture on page two, I think it's page two, it kind of gives you, mine's not in color, I think you're not in color. But that's what it is, it's just an inflatable with a mirror in the middle, it's kind of hard to see the mirror in the picture. And then if you turn to the following picture, it kind of shows you what the power station looks like. So, what this is on top is actually a small solar panel. So, if you take and collect light, let's say you take 10 square feet of light and. So if you take and collect light, let's say you take ten square feet of light and shine it on one square foot of panel, that panel will produce roughly ten times the amount of power. So the kind of math equation is if you take a, a solar panel that costs roughly forty dollars a square foot, and you reduce it by ten, you know, you've got forty dollars, and then you've got ten square feet of mirror at fifty cents, which is five dollars, so for forty-five dollars, you can produce roughly the same amount of power for four hundred dollars. So this technology does have the ability to actually reach grid parity, kind of for the first time, but, you know, we're definitely still in the research and development stage, and, you know, we don't want you to believe that we've solved the world's problems, we're just working on it.
What is the pressurization due to?
Uh, the pressurization is between three-quarter and one PSI.
Why, why would you need it, I mean, why does it come?
Oh, so what happens is if you look at this picture of this corner, that basically it's two pressure chambers divided. So if you have high pressure in the top chamber and low pressure in the bottom, the basically film creates a parabola, which basically creates a mirror. So a parabola, if you shine light on it, wherever you shine it, it refocuses back like a dish.
That's, that's a way to control the, how, how much the mirror's...
That's right. So the advantage of this is a couple of things. One, when you see those big mirrors out in the field, those mirrors can't flex, it's just a, a structure, so it can't adjust or refocus the light. You build it at one optimal point and it's that way all day long, this mirror can adjust all day long.
So the pressure should be there?
Yeah, the pressure should be there.
And these are photoelectric cells on the front?
Yeah. I mean, the, the, the solar panels on top of this are no different than what you see on a light pole or on someone's roof. There's nothing new about that technology. I mean, when you really boil it down to the simplest form, this is a cheap mirror. And, and basically just rotates on this axis and tracks the sun. There's no noise, there's no...
And what is your panel name?
Uh, the panel itself is just a standard solar panel, it's just one tenth the size. And what you see on it is, solar panels only convert twenty percent roughly of the light to power, so the other eighty percent becomes heat, so while you see it, it has a little thickness to it, that's just the heat signal, so basically dissipates the heat. It doesn't create heat, right, in essence, it actually reduces the heat by twenty percent.
Is this a project that you've already got financing in the last four?
Yeah, it's ready to go.
And so once, once the board approves that you got this...
Once you, once you approve it, we'll be submitting for permitting and, and all the raises we got. I mean, money's sitting in escrow, already funded, actually, a good portion of this is already built, that's where to put it. And, I mean, you know, Captain Brown Road is important to me, I grew up out there my entire life, and, you know, making sure that we take care of Captain Brown Road, and I still own, uh, four lots and Country Club Estates, and my dad still has fifty acres down that road, so we understand the importance of that.
Mentioned the property, just looking at applicant's name, this, this solar distribution regulation, so you, you say you, you, you've traded this land with Mr. McClure?
That's, basically, what we had, we're basically, we're under contract, we're working on the contract, the final details now for that trade, and it basically is contingent on your approval.
Mr. Chairman, one thing, if you look at the recommendations from the zoning board, uh, number two, it says, uh, requiring eight foot privacy fence, keep handles out of the... I think probably what, if you're trying to keep people out and all that, you might want to have a provision that says that that has to be posted, but what you do is you put the most assignments on there, and that's generally how, how you accomplish, I'm worried about people coming in and attracting this... I expect probably a genuine, that this is, this, uh, special section for the use of this, you're not, you'd come back for a site plan?
Yes, they will need to, um, because now the site plan process no longer comes to the board, it will, it's handled through the development review committee, so if y'all put, put with conditions, right, then they proceed to the site plan.
With the staff?
Yes, that's that.
I have a question.
The requirement is that the public acts are moved towards the buffer and also the privacy fence you have asked for.
Oh, yeah. And we even actually, in this, we even set those, and all harmless agreement with this school board.
My motion, please, Mr. Chairman. I don't feel, is, uh, this is public hearing against, uh, any, any other public comment?
May we ask the, uh, degree of publicity that you're interested in having or not having?
Um, with research and development on our side, we always would like to keep it as low as possible, because research and development is a, a long line of failures that eventually you hope to obtain some success, um, you know, we'd like to keep it as low as possible.
How high do you want the fence going to be?
Uh, the fence, uh, the recommendation at the review board was eight feet high, is that right? Yeah. And, and just so you have an idea, the sausages, the height of these really are a max of about eight feet high. They're five feet in diameter and they're three feet off the ground, so eight feet. If you want to go really high, it's going to be nine feet, and there may be a shed, maybe two sheds out there, they're ten by ten, and, you know, they'll be standard eight-footy height with a three-foot, probably roof top, like eleven feet or something.
I think it'd be excellent research, possibly to use it in my home.
These are actually utility grade systems, you could potentially use it for hot water, um, but mostly, i- if you were to quote, deploy these, these would be seventy acre, a hundred acre sites out in the desert, probably starting off with, um, but, yeah, they're, these systems are a couple hundred million dollars, these are utility grade systems.
So take away from resource, uh, you're saying, you're going to pay for this?
Um, from, from the county's standpoint, we're basically selling it, but this gets a little complicated, but basically what happens is, is that Tri-County buys power from Seminole, and they buy it at what's called an avoidant cost, which is basically the fuel cost plus if they had to build a facility. Gainesville purchases power, renewable power, for roughly twenty-two cents a kilowatt hour. We're selling the power that we produce to Tri-County at basically their avoidable cost, so we're selling it to them at the same cost, a cost to burn coal, which is mostly how power is produced by Seminole. So what it really is, is there's no cost savings, but there's no increasing cost whatsoever. So the school board, the school will almost be running off for local power. Uh, let's see, Wayne from Tri-County, but you got any comment?
No, I wish I had a question.
Wayne got to say it halfway right.
Pretty close.
One more question, please? The length of time to observe, do you already know the time through which you will complete your experiment?
Um, the project will be placed in service within the next nine months, and we'll be observing it for the next twenty years. Hopefully beyond that.
And this equipment will be on private property?
Yes.
Okay. Would it be taxable?
Uh, yes.
Someone will be there.
Just wanted to get that.
Someone will be there.
Someone, someone, we'll basically employ someone from Madison who will basically be over the site, there will not be someone there twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, um, but yes, there will be someone basically maintaining eight hours a day.
But they will use someone from Madison to get the job?
Yes. Yes. And, I mean, of course, there's a huge construction component, our intent is to use local forces to match as possible.
Is it easy for police patrol for casual passing?
Well, the one goal we have is to make sure that we actually keep a buffer between the school, um, so I think we have in here a twenty-foot buffer, so we'd like to try, the, basically the road right beside the school, which is a service road that runs pretty much from ninety to Captain Brown, our intent is to kind of keep a tree buffer there, but that would basically be the patrol route, and I think that gate's locked at night. But they could definitely go down Captain Brown, and, you know, we'd be more than happy to give emergency personnel keys to our gates or whatever they may need.
Anything else to say? A portion of the second floor? Any questions? And we have a motion?
No, we didn't have a second, I said, listen to that, but then we have to have a motion.
I didn't know there was a motion, I'm sorry. Motion to approve?
Motion to approve. That'd be my motion.
Our second motion. Can we have a motion approved? Second to approve. Special section, application?
Did you want to add any conditions, or did you want to add the conditions that were brought up by the planning and zoning board, or because you could, you can approve it as is, with conditions, without conditions, so that choice is yours?
What I would add to is that we go with the recommendation of planning and zoning board, in which the things that the school board had said, y'all included that in y'all's agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
And the canopy, and, and maintaining the canopy, uh, making sure the buffer included, that, that no damage would, um, occur to the canopy, uh, so long Captain Brown.
Questions, uh, for the application, what is required, what's your opinion on, spelled out there? Uh, any discussion? I want to favor that?
Aye.
Both? Five of them. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Number two, uh, this discussion, this, this, if I would come?
Commissioners, uh... Probably a couple of months ago, the, uh, MCDC asked for commissioners to, uh, consider re-advertising for the, uh, listing, right, and that's a thing about property, uh, the properties on, uh, MCDC, they, uh, I guess entertained two or three different realtors and decided on Callius Dickinson, and that contractor's last, so, uh, there's really no contact in effect right now with their realtor, and, uh, MCDC asked for commissioners to look at, uh, if they wanted to, like, entertain another realtor, what their thoughts were. In general, it'd be one thing that we've brought up and talked about, was the fact that, uh, if we, if anybody, uh, had any consequences going to happen, we're going to probably eliminate, uh, that's one of the caveats of running a business to, I guess, the promise, I don't know if you did, but, anyway, just your discussion, obviously, I would like to look at putting it out, getting another realtor, what's your thoughts on that, your point?
Do we have a sales sign up on there? I think that's at least sufficient now.
It's also on the website?
Yeah.
You know, let's watch, pushing a realtor, get some, look at that, and, you know, if you have any interest.
And, and I think you, uh, big sign that, uh, MCDC's going to put on the property, it's going to also have land available, and it's called, uh, here on office, so that'd be on that side, I think, uh, especially.
No passing land, so I think that'd be good enough.
Take no action on that, because...
We've considered that latest contract, and we will remove, uh, Callius Dickinson's sign.
Number three is, uh, new business, uh, good resolution, order of resolutions, this is, turns, can we rebuild the agency?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is some housekeeping, uh, years ago, I don't remember the exact year, but the, uh, city engaged, the city of Madison engaged in a, uh, some community redevelopment in downtown Madison, and at that time there was a, a program that may still be in effect. But anyway, the point of it was if they expended certain funds and, and increased the value of the property downtown, that the county would give back to the city a portion of the, uh, increase in the applicable tax revenue due to those, uh, beautifications of that, so in other words, if the city expended money, and because the city expended money, the value of the property goes up, and our, uh, applicable tax revenue still up, we give back a portion for all of the increase of those applicable revenues that cost the city anything, we hadn't lost anything, but the city's allowed to recapture that. We've been doing that, uh, for, uh, ten years, please, you remember? Ten years, I mean, that's just the way we've always done it. Um, and everybody knew about it and agreed to it and all that. And, uh, Ms. Barfield, in, in doing her work and preparing the, uh, uh, roles and the things that she has to do, discovered that we never actually had a resolution where this board approved that, and didn't have that in writing. So the thought was that at this point in time, even though we've been doing it for ten years, and, you know, and everybody's always done it, that was what was always understood, we do need to have a resolution that says that, where this board actually says, we approved that, to, to do that and, um, and take it retroactive. So that's why the, the resolution's coming for you now, just as housekeeper, to clean that up, where if we ever get, if this ever comes up with DOR, we've got something to file, we can say the board can't commission it. Uh, and Ms. Barfield may want to add something to that.
No, just, we, we had never realized that it had not been in place, the forms that we have to fill out now to provide to the state and certify to you all have a, um, an area where we have to include that amount now, and when we were filling it out this year, Department of Revenue said we needed to have this resolution in place, we were supposed to have that, and I think Lanigan and Associates have been preparing this information for the tax collector previously, but now that will not have to be done, because we have to provide those numbers on the form to Frances, and she'll have the numbers without them having to go through it individually, pick those parcels out, it comes out of a report that we generate for them.
So, like I said, the effect is it doesn't change anything we haven't been doing for the last decade, but it documents profit, that's, that's what we're asking.
My motion to accept this resolution?
Motion?
Second.
Motion second, we approve this resolution, any other discussion? I want to favor that?
Aye.
Both? Number four, uh, you got county attorney, we give draft orders, place more from, and then the cafe bids, we act unincorporated county. That's this ordinance that was under Connecticut, um, this is, uh, at the board's direction, I drafted this ordinance, uh, has not been noticed, so you can't enact it today, um, today's meeting was for y'all to look at it and get me in further direction, you might want to, on how you want the board to prepare. Uh, the point of the ordinance is, it does, this ordinance doesn't say we're never going to have any of these internet cafe things on the unincorporated area, it says we're going to have a temporary moratorium so that the county can look at regulations and decide whether, if this ends. Um, that's the appropriate thing to do if, if you all are concerned that you don't, that you don't want it in the unincorporated area. This wouldn't affect the incorporated area, of course, the cities have their own comp plans and land development regulations, and they regulate within the city how they see fit, so this would only apply to the unincorporated areas of the county. Um, this was a, the ordinance and the technical parts of it, I, I'm going to have to tell you that I, I, uh, copied this from a similar ordinance in, uh, Clay County, that's where the technical parts of it, as far as defining that it's a simulated gaming device, all these sorts of things, where those come from. I have no direct understanding of how those things work, if that's the appropriate term or whatever, I'm, I'm trusting that they did, that's a tech, that's beyond legal expertise, that's a technical subject that you may want to ask somebody else, have the sheriff look at it, or one of those guys that are, that, where they're trying to regulate these businesses, how you define what's gambling type operation is from a point of regulation. I have every reason to believe this is a good ordinance, but I, you know, but I, I just wanted to be upfront, tell you that's beyond my expertise. Also, in the, um, uh, I left blanks for when you want the ordinance to run through, I would certainly think, uh, if you're going to have a moratorium, you want it to run well past the next legislative session, because the next legislative session, they may take care of it, we don't have to do any regulation, so you at least want it through that, uh, legislative session. Um, but remember the, the, uh, under Florida law, you're not allowed to have a moratorium because we want to give the legislature time to act, you're allowed to have a moratorium so that we can investigate and start, uh, working on the process of creating our own rules and that, but I don't think there's anything wrong with those times running, running concurrently, running at the same time.
You talked about this for about a year?
Yeah, that, that's generally... Yeah, that's generally, that's generally considered appropriate, because it's about a year. So I think if you wanted to add in, you know, you could put the date in from the date that we noticed it, you all adopted. You know, or you could have, you could even notice this way with blanks, and then you could set the date at the notice probably. Do it that way. Otherwise, I think it's fairly straightforward. It does prohibit the processing of any applications. It does have exceptions for extraordinary hardship. So that if somebody had tremendous hardship that could bring before the board and ask, that's generally required for a moratorium to meet due process requirements. And then, you know, it's got to sunset. So that's all I have unless y'all have any further questions concerning.
Question four. How do you like to see?
How many commissions you have received with this for at least twelve months, or if we're allowed to give us down? Sort of understanding of this.
And I think all we can do today is tell us to notice it for the next opportunity, and then at that time, y'all can decide whatever dates you want. But I had some person in public. Yes, probably a bit more person about consensus. Just go ahead and notice it the next day. And we'll get it in the paper the next time we can, I don't know if it'll be the next meeting. And actually, we don't have a meeting, a second meeting in November, maybe. It'll be the next meeting or the first meeting.
Do you have one item you would sort of put off the scent?
Yes.
We have some new numbers, what you had in your packet. On the first line, it affects the three budget amendments. On the first one is a property appraiser, a reduction in that budget of $1,374. And then down next to the last line is a public defender, $2,296.25 is a reduction in that amount that was budgeted during the session. And then the other is for code enforcement, an adjustment in salary, which is basically a change in the total budget of $526.17, basically. Let's say net savings to the general fund, $1,651.52 for all three budget amendments. With that, simple explanation, which is reasonable, for the front two cents, I would say.
MH, mobile home, code enforcement is a property. What did I have to do? I think that should have been, that should have been, that's the explanation of what it was. Code enforcement. Any questions? I have a motion to approve this. Please, then, repeat my question. Motion to approve this again. Second. Motion second, any other discussion? I'll refer that.
Aye.
I want to give idea of your take there. So we tend to, your comments, I think, go right in something.
Yes, sir. Board members are aware in addition, a group has requested the board to enact a resolution honoring and change the name of the road in honor of Mr. Cecil McPhitty, of what Madison County had been developing. The board, we've never, we've never done this before. The board certainly has the authority to do that. And the board certainly adopted resolutions honoring them. But you haven't changed the road, haven't changed the name of the road since the new ordinance. The board certainly has the authority to do that. We need some guidance from the board on how you want to proceed as far as considering that. If you want to send notice to the folks on the road, say, hey, the board's going to be thinking about this at this day. Y'all can talk to us if you want to, if you want us to go ahead and do it. You know, that's kind of the board, but staff needs direction on how y'all want to proceed from here, what you want to do. Any suggestions?
Yeah, changing the name of the road, that seems to be some of the physical reasons. Should we send out letters, letters on that road? I don't believe there's very many out there.
How many, how many people you think on the road?
I could not over five or six. I was like, I talked to some, they said they didn't have a problem. But like I said, just, just to give the law, when you change the ad, physical address, you have to, driver's license, bacon, there's my stuff that you have to change. I'd like to at least give them an opportunity to share a opinion.
So on changing the name, you got to change that. You got to change the address?
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
If the board orders that the name of the road be changed, and what you're doing is you're changing the road on the sign, and that is the official address, the post office changes. And so they're going to have certain, like we did before when we renamed the whole county, it's the same process. You have a certain amount of time to go to file creditors, these driver's licenses changed and all that, and upload the boat addresses for a certain kind of time. You know, you have to start the process.
Just out of respect to the people living there, I feel like they ought to at least give them an opportunity to share a opinion. I don't have a problem with changing it.
So we should send a notice, go have Michael lawyer, and turn down the conditions.
I'll place a new position there at times.
Can you, can you call a police?
And on the road, you want to change this stuff, if you, so I didn't look at you. Okay, when, I did look at you, weren't you, weren't you? Okay, and if you guys come up with a regular resolution to change it, then we have, and you presented to us, and we have ninety days then to get, you have to change it in our system, in our software. Okay? Now, if you want, I can do a little research and find out exactly how many people are living, you know, or have the physical address limit wrote in. And we have at least one business, commercial business, that's also on that road?
I talked with him, he said, no problem.
Okay. But I mean, I can get back with you with some more information. I do know that anybody that you change your address, they're going to, like you said, they're going to change their insurance papers, their mortgage papers, their driver's license, all that stuff. I mean, the, the post office will give them twelve months from the date that we actually made the physical change. They'll have twelve months to get all their stuff, you know, changed over before they stop getting their mail at the old address. Okay? Now, I can also change, now, when we did the mass addressing, you know, the mass change when we did the nine-one-one addressing, the driver's license people, if it was because we changed to a nine-one-one address, they absorbed the cost of getting a new driver's license for that, if you were close to already having to get it changed. Like if you were in, still had, you know, two years left on your license, they would change it for free. But I'm not sure on how that's going to be if the board changes, changes a road name. I don't know whether it's going to have to be absorbed by the property owner. You know, and nowadays, getting your driver's license changed is not a issue. But I could check with the NMB on that and see what they, you know, see what their, what else on that are. Okay? But other than that, and it is a rather long road. You know, let me, like I said, I can, if I could talk about it before I came down, I could have researched later, how many were there.
Well, definitely being all the parcels that touched, right? The parcels that are addressed.
Yeah, we just need the, the site addresses on there. But other than that, and like I said, the best thing to do would be if you sent, or if you're going to advertise it, or you're going to send them a notice.
I think that's probably better, see, just send a notice.
Okay.
I would know what minimal people must do.
I think it would be cheaper to send a notice back.
Okay, and what normally happens is when you change addresses and these people come in and they need an address, they need a letter from my office that says, old address and new address.
Well, it should be considerably easier to generate than an address, because all you're doing is changing the word Delphini to the word, the number of the property.
Yeah, but they're still going to, they're still going to have something from my office that says that this has been changed from, from 124 Northeast Delphini to 124 Northeast Matheny. Okay? And other than that. I can find out in about five minutes, if you, if you guys want to carry on and give me a minute. I can run back up to my office and find that.
If y'all decide to send a notice, she can give back to staff, we'll see.
Yeah, we could do mail merge or whatever, get on the envelope.
And I wonder, you know, if, for, for the purpose, you're saying that they need a notice. I wonder if you can't do one blanket notice that says, all addresses in Madison County that used to be Delphini or our now.
You're dealing with insurance companies and mortgage companies, and they are not the original people in the world.
But remember, we didn't have that before.
Yeah.
It wasn't just changing the name, it was going from round four box something to a pattern street name.
We can try it. I mean, we can send it out like that and see if they, if their insurance companies and mortgage companies take it back, and we can do something different.
What, what I think you do is send out a blanket one like that to everybody, go ahead and send that, and if any individual has any problems, we can deal with those one catch.
Okay, well, I mean, if you guys are actually going to change, if you know you're going to change it, and you're just notifying the property owners that this is going to be your new address, it's going to, your number's going to stay the same? We can go ahead and, if it's not, like you said, about, what, fifteen people?
Well, part of the idea is to send them an occasion, for them to, to thank you, to give them an opportunity to voice their opinion.
Okay, and then, then when you send a letter out to them saying that, yes, it has been changed, we can include an old address, new address letter in that.
Right.
And that should take care of their problems. All right? And so just kind of give me a heads up on, on, you know, how it's going.
Well, and I don't think there's any urgency about the timeframe, so if the board decides that your office needs another block or something.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, just to kind of get a heads up that, you know, what's going on and kind of kept it in the loop, sure on it. All right?
And y'all were going to pay to send those out, right? I didn't budget for that.
That's what I'm going to be, because I'm busy.
Teddy cat.
So, well, you need a motion, that's the way you want to do it? We, it ain't a gentleman's, we need the men, the gentlemen's.
I just might insist, you know, have staff send a notice to everybody, all the parcels have been addressed on that road. And that's, because that's the only ones that go change. You may have a parcel that touches that road, but if it's not addressed off that road, it's not going to.
Tom, what was the reason in changing the name to the Matheny name? What?
Just.
Maybe we might look at Ms. McKinney.
In honor of.
McKinney, would you like to come up?
I almost started signing.
That's, that's, you and Ms. Jones, what you doing?
I'm just curious, and others had asked too, so.
It's a command before.
I have to sign in.
Good afternoon. So we have to tell it, please.
No, I don't want to.
The reason for changing the name was Mr. Matheny. He does something great in Madison County. We could not vote, or they could not vote unless someone identified them. When I say them, we, the black people in Madison County. Ms. Jennifer Merritt went to register to vote, and they told her that she would have to have someone to identify her. Now, remember, no blacks was registered to vote and wasn't voted. So Ms. Merritt say, yes, I'm going to ask Mr. Matheny. So she went to Ms. Matheny, she said, Mr. Matheny, would you identify me because I want to register to vote? He said, sure, Jennifer, I'll do it. And when he identified Ms. Merritt, Jennifer Merritt, he paid a great price, and his family also. He was the supervisor of what?
Negro education.
Negro education. He was taken down for that. He had to get an attorney to help him get his salary and all of that. So that's why the question was asked by one of his children, say, Daddy, why did you do that? He said, that was the right thing to do. So that's why we asked that, that street to name after Mr. Matheny. Because I was already registered to vote, because I'm from Jacksonville, but my other sisters and brothers couldn't. And something else you need to know, too, this wouldn't have come up unless a Mr. Howard Waring, on the corner of, where, in that hall, there's a forgiveness monument. And that's how we honored Mr. Matheny. There's just so much history now, so people have a good, beautiful history that the law is going to be pleased with. So, my dear, that's why this street we asked to be named after Mr. Matheny.
That history is not written in Madison. And I was one of the persons that was able to register on March the sixth, nineteen fifty-four. There's just a few of us living that can witness this.
Thank you, sweetie.
And that's why we asked the resolution be printed in the minutes of this board, so that it will be in the history of Madison County.
And now it's in the records.
Yes.
And this was running from, this was the home, the home place of the thing.
I know the Mathenys were up there, but it, I just needed, I wanted better explanation. Thank you.
Yes, my dear. And a lot of people don't know the history. Well, I say, and that's good, because a lot of people don't know the history. Know something that you should know about history. And, and that monument on the corner is in the history of Florida history, if you get one of those books you see. Thank you.
Yes, well, I want to meet with you, Mike, just advertise. Commissioners, I need to.
Smile, little man. And commissioners, thank you all. And thank you, Mr. Tim Sanders, for working with us and the attorney. You know, God is pleased with good things. And he looked down on you right out and say, well done.
Good in favor of the servant.
Yes. Come up a little high if you say that.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Consensus is that we'll add this to next to the meeting agenda. And we're going to let folks with addresses on this road, that we will have to address this resolution. Any constitutions? Lee, if you have anything else to come to the property appraiser's office?
Um, no, our value adjustment board went well yesterday, and we have two full days of it next week. So thank you to the members of the board that participated on that yesterday. It's not easy, is it?
Matter of fact. I'm not gonna do this.
Uh, any other justices? Alan, you have anything more?
Just, uh, come out tomorrow afternoon, it's around five thirty, and we feel that all your pride, okay? Have your attendance if you can. Friday, I see the barbecue chicken and all the trim.
At the extension office.
At the extension office.
What time, Mr.?
Five thirty. Then, uh, next meeting Wednesday, November sixth, we will have a lunch at the extension office in Rock Creek, Illinois.
Will it be a roast?
After thirty years, everybody knows enough on... Thursday, November tenth, that's the road that, and I talked about that, but I hope you guys liked that last show. We will have our floor at the, the number ten, that's where we talked about last meeting.
See, November tenth, where we probably can get, uh, folks some money, do what we know to do, everybody gives you...
All right. I'll swap.
All right, okay.
It's the workshop, probably live here on Tuesday, uh, fifteen, sixteen.
Fifteen.
Fifteen. And all return Thursday afternoon, seven. Right now, our U.A. Commissioner Ellis, I think you're on two commissioners' bill. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner?
I have nothing.
I will be at the meeting on Monday for all, so I will, um, bring you back the information as, as for the purchase of a property.
African B, is that?
Um, USDA, that's gonna be Tuesday to twenty-four, y'all got a...
Yes, for same citizens.
Same citizens.
Same citizens. Be the same thing.
Latin, one, thirty, two.
Both the same.
Both the same, two. I should have got a citation, the college is the one handling.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I did any of that, too.
That's all I got.
Mr. Chairman? I hope I had this, uh, Chamber back with, uh, St. Gerber at seven. Sam, would you like to respond on that?
Yeah, just would like everybody to turn out, tickets for twenty-five dollars, corporate tables of eight are two hundred, corporate tables of four are, um, a hundred. Bobby Tickle will be our keynote, um, bringing presentation on, uh, progress energy, obviously, economy and leadership in Chamber world.
Should be good speakers, uh, Chamber, Chamber speakers, uh, at Shelby's.
Yeah, we have Shelby's, yes, sir.
November seventh. And one other thing, Texas Talking Children, I got, uh, if y'all got this or not, but, uh, this gentleman's gonna be at, uh, Bank of Madison, just to, for, sit in, just walk through with, uh, Texas Talking Children, been a great program in our county. I know you've been a mentor, I've been a mentor in the past, and we have some, probably some seventy or eighty kids on this program right now, in St. Gerber's, I suspect, if you got time, run over here and speak to them. Sure? I don't have anything. Okay, uh, nobody has anything else, uh?
Move into the chair.